All right, well, welcome everyone to the Board Sunday. And the title of this board listening session today is Falling Short: Looking Ahead, or we can use Jeff's original title, which was Bridging the Gap: How Should We Reconcile the Difference Between Revenues and Expenses in OUUC's Budget? You will see that many of the slides are directly related to showing you what that gap is and what that gap has been over time, so that we can see how we got here. And then what we're going to do is break into small groups to see if we can come up with some creative solutions. Before I get started, I'd like to light the chalice. Thank you. That went better than I thought. I've never done that before. We can go ahead and go to the next slide. Oh, thank you. All right, so I've introduced what our discussion's going to be today. Carmel, our stewardship drive chair, is going to talk to you about our last stewardship drive and where we are currently. Jeff has done some great research, and this is on his own. He was just curious, and he went down the rabbit hole. And it turns out inflation has a whole bunch to do with where we are today. So Jeff is on inflation. We're going to do small group breakout sessions, and Carmel's going to get us broken up. And there are what looks like about three groups here. And then there's going to be breakout sessions online as well. And then we'll have a little bit of a reporting back discussion with everyone. So let's go ahead and go to the next slide. Oh, I guess I can do that. All right, Carmel, would you like to come on up?
Well, welcome all you frogs. What do I do? Oh, gosh.
That's to go to the next slide.
Oh, okay. I don't know how many slides I have, but maybe you'll go this way. Two? And we're doing this? Mike? Mike? Or this?
Either mic you want. You can come out this way.
Which one would you like?
Sure, that one.
Okay.
Because I like to use my hands. Okay, so, welcome everyone. It's so nice to see so many of you here and my caring, loving congregation of OUUC. And it's been an exciting, a very exciting pledge drive. And you can see where we were headed and what we were hoping for in raising $571,446. That stuff really gets to me. I don't know why. Okay, so our goals, we had two goals. One, the financial goal, and the other was to increase the number of pledges. And the idea that we needed to expand the pond, because more pledges often results in more dollars. And so we were really looking at that as well this year. So our pledge goal was 300. Our pledging financial goal was 571,446. So as of very recently, our pledge, we are at 477,230. And that leaves us just $94,000 short, just 94. So, and we can do that if we try. And so today, we'll be asking you to talk about that shortfall and listen to you about how we might make the difference up and how we might find 73 more people in our midst to join our lovely faith community and make sure that everybody has a space to enjoy our company, our mission, our vision. So with that, is there another one for me?
Yes.
Okay, here you go. This is really one that's really important in my mind, because it's kind of the analysis carnage for us. And we've been struggling with this for the last couple of years as stewardship, is that how long you've been a member or involved in the congregation or a donor, a pledger in the congregation, really tells a story about how much commitment, financial commitment, that you will provide. And so as you can see by this number, those of us that have been here 26 to 35 years are really averaging $33,000 for the average pledge. That's that second line. And then down the first line is the number of pledges in that category to get to our 227. And then you see that anyone that's been involved 16 to 25 years is also a larger portion of their pledges goes to OUUC. So, and then as you get down to under five, the newer folks amongst us usually are just starting to understand the pledge work, what this congregation means to them, how they've become involved in our everyday activities, our justice work, our work with feeding people and making sure that we have economic justice as well as social justice in both anti-racism and environmental. So that, once they find us, or it could be that they came through choir, that happens too, once they find us, and as you can see, generally the pledges go up. So the most important thing is finding more pledges, right? So get people on the pledging road, shall we say, or the pond. Get them in the pond. Get them warm, get them comfortable, give them what's the spirit of what we're accomplishing here at OUUC. And then their commitment and their involvement grows and grows and grows. So that's what we know. But look at that. We still have 13 members that pledge that have been over here 35 years. That one, I love that. That one, that's just kind of cool. So think about that as we talk about, as we brainstorm together. And that's me.
I'm okay.
We'll have questions later.
Okay. It's a quick one.
Okay.
How many members are there?
200 and...
Oh, you know, how many members? How many members? She congregated.
That's a congregation?
No, we need the mics.
Hello?
250 something, 280 something, something like that.
Two questions.
290 something. I knew it was a...
How many members are there?
Two...
No, the question was the people online.
Oh, how many members are there? 290 something.
Is that pledging units?
Right. There's a difference between members and pledging units. So many of those pledging units are more than one member. Yep, here we go. We've got to move on, because we're going to work you. We're going to work you, chief.
Can I just help you, please?
And you see, upfront, we've adjusted our most current projected revenues of stewardship drive as of yesterday. We're at 478. And then our projected expenses are still the same. So the gap is a little bit less, but it's still there.
And this morning, there was another 500 bucks. So there you go. So I'm on. Okay, so I'm treasurer, so I've been obsessing about this for a while. So the... So we've been operating at a deficit, meaning revenues are lower than expenditures for a number of years. For example, in the current fiscal year, 2324, we have budgeted revenues of 519,745, budgeted expenses of 569,464. The difference was, it's not that we aren't paying our bills. It's not that we're borrowing to make up the difference like the United States government does. We used a number of sources of one-time money. We tapped the endowment earlier than we thought we would for 16,000. And we also got some reserves to make up that difference. Plus, we didn't pay the total assessed UUA dues. We only paid $5,000 of dues instead of like 20 or something like that. And Reverend Mary and Reverend Sarah gave up some of their professional expenses. So I think you're going a little bit...
I can show you where the gap is.
Okay. So I... Okay, next slide. Next slide. Okay, okay. So how did we get here? Well, since, as we all know, since about 2020, inflation has gone up dramatically, about 20%. But pledges have been flat during that time, both in terms of number of pledges and dollars. Also, the inflation doesn't just impact church budgets, they impact all of our budgets. So it made it more difficult to pledge when the cost of groceries are going up 20%. And then COVID hit. It limited church attendance. And recall also, in the past 10 years or so, we've been going through transition after transition after transition, and it makes it a little bit more difficult, we think, to... At least that's the hypothesis, that pledging is more difficult during such times. So next slide. So here's a graph, and my wife, Mary, actually put this together. So you have the blue line is pledges. The red line is the Washington Consumer Price Index. You can see that kind of goes up steadily from about 2001 and goes up a little bit quicker in the last, since COVID. The pledges went up, were going up and up and up and up and up, very steadily. And then, starting around 2015, started really flattening out. The little spike there in 2022 is a little bit misleading, because that was the... Remember, we had a change in the fiscal year. We had a six-month transition period. That's an annualized number, and so the people, I think frankly, a number of people made a mistake. They pledged their normal annual amount for the six-month period instead of cutting it in half. So there's a little bit of a spike there. But if you were to kind of do an average, you can see that, starting around 2015, 2014, it's been flat, but the cost of everything has gone up. Next slide. So here's sort of an interesting bit of data. In 2016, we had 238 pledging units pledging 446,000. If you do a present value of that, that's adjusted, that would be 573,884. So 2016 and 2023, 24, our current pledging year, or our most recent fiscal year, current fiscal year, they're almost identical, both 446,000 plus. But one was nine years ago, and if you adjust that for inflation, it would have been 573,000, which is about what our ask was for this time. Next slide. So we filled the gap with one-time money. At the early part of COVID, we got PPP loans that were eventually forgiven. That enabled us to save money that we would have spent for staff and utilities and PPP-eligible expenses and use that for a couple of years to make up the difference. We had some bequests that we used as one-time money. We tapped operational reserves. One year, we tapped program reserves. And as I mentioned, we reduced UUA dues and cuts professional expenses, all of which were hoping that the trend line on pledges was going to stop being flat and start going up. That hasn't happened.
Jeff, can you explain what PPP?
Oh, sure. Paycheck Protection Program, federal program for COVID, gave a lot of businesses, entities, including nonprofits like churches, some loans to pay for staff, basically. So there's some good news here. I always want to say there's good news, that the capital campaign enables to pay off loans and save, at least in the first year, about $40,000 in debt service. And so that helps us through all this tremendously. It was a very successful capital campaign. We have a capital reserve funded by the capital campaign and generosity from George Lanning's gift and bequest. It not only paid off the HVAC system, but we have a capital reserve for further projects, and we use some like gutters and so forth. And we have an endowment fund now that's now reached not quite 500,000. It was about there. Stock market went down a little bit. This month is a little bit down. But that's enabled us to draw out of the endowment fund, according to the formula, about between $16,000 and $17,000. It'll be $17,000 for next year if we do that. So, next slide. So, but the gap remains. And despite the fact that we've had increased pledges, not pledging units, but pledge dollars for this pledge drive, and we have no more debt, and we have an endowment contribution, we still have a gap. And that's what this session is about. And so the use of one-time money was important for a short-term solution. But one-time money is one-time money. It's not there. So we can only dip into so many reserves before they're gone. We can only dip in, we can only count on bequests and one-time gifts so often. And so going forward, it would be nice to reduce the gap between our budgeted expenses and our budgeted revenues. So I think we need your thoughts, and that's back to Carmel.
Okay. The bicycle is late. Okay, here we go. So Carmel, I have a question before you send us off into work. Is that what you're about to do?
Yeah.
I have a question, so I need a mic.
You need a mic.
No, I'm afraid. I'm very, very afraid.
You use follow instructions? So do I need to turn this on? Or are you going? There it is. Thank you. So just before we go off for our brainstorming session, which is, I assume, what you're sending us off on, I have a question, I guess, for you, Arlene. So last year at this time, we heard of plans for this board. I'm not sure what we called it then or what we're calling now, the Financial Stability Sustainability Committee. And so, you know, before we do the brainstorming, what I want to know is what's happening with that committee? Because, you know, somebody needs to be driving this. And, you know, I just, I feel this is an urgent time for this church.
I have an answer.
And we need some urgency around getting that committee started. So thank you for your insight.
So what's happening is, we had to figure out what they could do and whose job it was. And for that, we needed to revise our governance policy. So we have worked really hard this year on the board to revise our governance policy. And now that we know who's supposed to do what and who's responsible for what, and what we should call it, if it should be a committee, a task force, or whatever, it's even going to be in the new governance policy as a committee of the board.
Great, great job. But, or great job, great job, and... So what's your timeline? What is your timeline on recruiting, you know, a facilitator for this group, for recruiting people to serve on it and giving them a charge and letting them go with all these great ideas that work? Because we can come up with as many great ideas as we can, but if there isn't, you know, if the leadership isn't in place, then it's going to be another year gone by.
Next year, I'm not the president. But next year, I'm a member of the board. And I've already expressed interest to Reverend Mary about being a big part of this.
And you'll be great. You're a great leader. I appreciate that. Where are the rest? And I'm stuck on this.
Well, we'll do it on board's time. We're not going to do it right now at this meeting.
And I appreciate that, but again, this is an urgent time, and I don't get a sense of urgency around this. And I just have to say that over and over and over again. Because I absolutely appreciate that we have to have the policies in place and we have to make sure we're doing things according to our values. Yes, and, you know, the new board is in place when? The end of June, the beginning of July?
Yes.
I really hope that in July, then there's some real focus on getting that team in place and getting, opening up the door for them to do work. Because otherwise, it's not going to happen, Carmel.
Thank you. The current board is here.
Thank you. I'm moving on. I'm moving on, because I decided I wanted to have group discussion. Thank you for sharing. And now you don't have to share that in the group. That's awesome. Thank you.
It's easy to share until it happens.
Okay, everybody stand up. If you... And count off to five.
One.
Two.
Three.
Four.
Five.
Two.
One.
One.
Two.
Three.
Four.
Five. One, two, three. Alex, I'm giving you a guess. Four. I don't know. I'm four. Four. Five.
One.
Two, three, four. Five. One, two, three. One, two, three, four.
Four.
One, two, three, four.
Five.
Two, three, four.
Five.
Four.
All right. I'm assuming this part is not relevant to y'all online. So who's supposed to be the hosts of the breakout rooms here?
Rachel's there. Cora's over there.
Anybody jumping in? I swear we're supposed to have... There we go, Rich. Okay. Anybody else? All right, I can just put you all in there. Let's see here.
I'm here.
Beth, are you supposed to be a host too? Is that you?
Oh, I'm not a host. Nope.
How many without online?
There are 19 people online. Who was supposed to be the host? I have Rich volunteer.
Rich and... Who's the other one?
Let's see who's here sometimes.
It seems like one group would be awfully big. Maybe they were anticipating fewer people hanging around.
All right, it sounds like Eric, you would have been nominated to head the other group along. Rich is going to have one, and Eric is going to have one. All right, and I am opening.
Linda also offered.
Oh, sorry, did you?
Sounds like we could do three.
Oh, hang on, sorry. But I don't have... Okay, you're live now, if you want. You're live again. Mics are live.
Okay.
No?
Yes. Your assignment.
Oh, but wait, wait. Don't give them their assignments after they're in rooms. Hang on, now I have to bring them back from their rooms. I already sent them to their breakout rooms, so they're not going to get your instructions. Can you wait 50 seconds?
I will.
Or maybe I can figure out how to... No, I already tried to close it. Sorry. We should talk through the tech of breakout.
I'm bossy, and you can be bossy. I'm really good with that. I'm so good with that.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, you have 30 seconds.
This is just chance to listen. We need to listen as a board, that we need all of your ideas and all of your energy, and all the great ideas are all in this room, and I'm certain of that. So it's a simple question. We just want you to brainstorm, we just not discuss or dialogue.
Wait like six more seconds. There you go.
Five, four, three, two, one.
Now you can talk to me.
No, it's a simple question to discuss in your groups. You need to ask yourselves, what do you think would be reasonable for us to do as a congregation to bridge the gap between what we need as a congregation and what we're able to do in stewardship pledges? And that's a brainstorm, and it is not a dialogue. So recorder, please keep it just an idea on this, and then we'll report those out if you have time.
Clarifying question?
Yes, dear?
Do you mean just for this budget cycle or?
This budget cycle. Or are we going to help out the budget in coming here?
So that's the stewardship pledge I was for, 2425, starting July 1st. So everybody, we have, everybody has a recorder? Everybody has a pin?
No.
Okay. We're going to put the pin right here. Pin for you, a recorder. And we will get back here and... I'll give you a two-minute warning. Two minutes of warning. Accelerating the report, opening the mic. And people online, please, wind your recorder. And once again, it's a brainstorm, it's not a dialogue. We just want to hear your ideas all come together. Thank you so much for your statement.
Adjusted for inflation. Adjusted for inflation.
My ideas are... Put the fish to rest, it's hurtful.
Did I get down skin in it? I don't open it.
Yeah, but I'm missing out on it, because I used to organize monitors. And well, when we do, it's a bit subrude, because I got it in my heart of country. And we can make some monitors.
So what would you think?
Well, I could look at it, essentially, about occasionally setting it to $500.
Okay.
All right, so what would you think, Erica? How small are studies?
You like an iteration of the pitch? If you see a lot of things, you can already strike it.
Okay, major all small relationships. That's a good idea. But if you're to execute, then...
Yeah, all mics on.
All mics on.
And if you can't split in those other places, you might have to... And I think it's a powerful, say, help reverse to be able to come up.
Are there some things going to interfere or be included?
Follow the theme to the entire congregation.
Why, whatever.
We're just having a discussion.
Well, yes.
It's a leading, while also being proud of the congregation.
To the drive, including Fox and...
Just get out, we know who you're speaking to. I think Brandon will... We've done that so well, so it's my surprise to people. Their voices, we're talking, we're just... We had a return, we had a return.
I would look at, I didn't know if you were a partial... I would look at membership and in the directory and picking up our programs and have a flexibility, have enough of a world pledging and behavior that we call a little bit of a layer of simply a lot of... But they were... And I thought we had a... But they're all... If you're interested in a special community, if you're a member of your entire community, separate from your immediate church. Well, some... A bit, well, outside of... I know. In our members and in our directory and in our programs, my provider, we are all participating community members. Now, if you've been up to...
It's not, it's not their job to... It's energy required.
Yeah.
That would be... I think that we try to, like, answer them. We should have more of our... See, but don't... There's so many... Why we are fighting, we can always have... And I already... I'd be so... You guys have got this. Yeah. There are...
Just remind yourself.
Thank you. I'm not... I'm trying to make sure. That's... Good for it. Can we all have a... That's... But I try to test point. We always come back to thinking that you're... You know, but I was... We always... What breaks your people?
That's a good question. And so one thing I want...
I feel fine, so not everybody will...
Teaching that's literally smart. Clearly...
From the board, it's a little funny.
Somebody will understand you.
I don't.
I don't ever understand.
You don't have a heart.
So... We don't understand. It's not... There's something that I can do without. It's... Listen to me, Sally. I just don't know what they are, and I don't know what they're... I don't feel like I've done a good job explaining what it actually costs. That's why I'm here.
Yes, I would say... I would say one-on-one. Our programs, their costs, their possible... We're gonna need more time. I assume we don't get it too fast, but we do some things that are expensive. And we may say, oh, we're always going to do a relationship. That's a service between the community. One service that are working, and we have, we just have to think about is that, um, we, we've always not in relation to, we continue not to... I don't know which ones those are, but it's a choice.
I agree. At some point, we actually have, uh, recommended budgets, that it's possible to increase pledges. Church was, basically today, on average, it costs X number of thousands of dollars per cent per year of church, and that tends to be distributed across people with the... Roughly speaking, every Saturday, you know, so dear.
When do you have?
Okay, this is the last spot you have. This is the last one to share at our golden plate. This is great. Online, okay, start with folks online. Okay, so, we start with folks online, and so, as it goes.
We're gonna report out. We're gonna report out, and if, if the, if you see or hear an idea that's been shared once already, you can just say ditto, or you can just tell, share with us what you haven't heard yet, okay? We don't have a lot of time, so if you have something that's the same as somebody else's group, then what you wanna do is just say, yep, we said that too, and, yes, and. Um, so quickly, just acknowledge, uh, an idea, and then move to other ideas that your group has generated. We're gonna start with the folks online, and we have three groups, and we're gonna try to do this in less than ninety seconds. Oh my God, no, not all of us, not all of us. Okay, and yes, I'll probably try to cut you off, so, first group, online.
I think that would be us. Um, so, uh, one of the, the members of our breakout group reminded us that we used to get a fair share of giving guide. Uh, this person found that that was useful. Um, as, uh, we recollected, it was five percent of your income, and we had other people in our group agree that a guideline might be helpful. Uh, someone else said it was not clear whether the donation levels in the presentation represented a per-person or per-household pledges, um, so it made it hard to gauge an individual pledge for a single person. Uh, it was also pointed out that our staff is getting larger. Uh, there was some concern about there being a lack of two services, and, um, also some concern for what happens when someone has financial difficulty and is not able to afford either fundraising events for their pledge, and whether that would affect their membership in OUUC. And it was also noted that, um, we should, uh, like the Olympia School District is currently doing, we need to look at our expenses, where cuts can be made, um, whether, how much we're committed to our, uh, central administration, and, um, I think that was all the feedback we got. At least that was all I heard in the room.
Okay, next group online.
Um, I can go. Uh, Linda Seltzer here. We had four suggestions. One was to sell, for, for, uh, to sell items like, uh, t-shirts, chalices, marketing them to other UU congregations, so that was one suggestion. Another suggestion was, would it be possible to receive a higher percentage of the revenue from our book sales? Uh, that was one suggestion. Another was opening a childcare center, and the last one was, um, maximizing rental ability for our property. That's it.
Okay. Um, I, I can speak to, uh, the few that are left. Um, um, no, a second service was in the offing for next year, and we're thinking about, uh, no second service to save money, to use some reserves, uh, like part of the endowment fund, um, because, uh, we've, um, paid off our mortgage now, to, um, uh, plant and produce, uh, food and have a produce fair. Um, eat your food from our own gardens, or do a garden at the church, and, uh, cut expenses. Oh, also, uh, to, uh, make a, 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 a real effort at, um, uh, new members, uh, and, and being welcoming of, uh, of, of, of people who drop by, uh, so we'd probably have to have a, a, a class on that one.
Thank you, Eric. Group number one. Oh, gimme, 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 gimme. Okay, you can hear me. So, um, host concerts where we share the revenue with the, uh, musical group. Um, follow up with a second request for pledges, making, um, especially, you know, people who haven't pledged, or increase your pledge. Um, set and follow up on, um, making sure, really making sure that everyone that's participating in congregational life is pledging, and following up and paying those pledges. There's, help folks better understand our budget, where the funds are going, why we need the amount we need, so that, uh, we can understand why we are pledging. Look at the program, along the outlines of cutting costs, but look at the programs. What is it costing per person that's participating there that might inform how we make budget cuts? Provide more information about how the cost to operate the church relates to individual or family pledging unit, so, and, you know, if we have two, X number of, um, pledging, pledges, then, you know, it's Y amount of money per unit kind of information. Um, encourage tithing or something along, you know, kind of re, I guess, reinvigorate the fair share giving guidelines, and share that. Thank you. Group, hand that over to group number two.
So we al, we also had the rent space. Uh, it was suggested that we can cut HVAC costs, uh, with better efficiency, renting space. Bill, uh, hit up Bill Gates and Warren Buffett. Uh, grant some organizations that, uh, fund religious organizations, um, have one-on-meetings with, one-on-one meetings with congregation members to increase, uh, participation, uh, increasing sponsorship of Thursday dinners, um, relationship building with congregation members and newer members, and the surcharge for more classes, for the classes.
Number three. Thanks, John. My name is Wendy Tanner. I'm, uh, let's see, we had some of those same suggestions. In addition, we talked about, um, ways to increase membership, like advertising, um, information about our, um, congregation, both in the UU, like national publications, as well as local. Uh, doing some additional communication programming within OUU C on a regular basis about budget and expenditures and, uh, fundraising, not just during budgeting season. Um, we talked about, instead of childcare, we talked about a preschool, uh, and then, um, adding EV chargers to the parking lot that are chargeable, I mean, that are, uh, you pay for, and also additional solar panels, which would reduce the electric, electricity charges. Um, we were successful at doing fundraising for the, for the panels that we have now. And then partnering with the Ole Arts and Music Organizations for events here, could be concerts, um, art shows, those kinds of things, and then, um, training on, providing some training information on how to do effective charitable donations from a tax perspective, uh, both for pre-retirement and post-retirement.
Great, all right, thank you, number three, now number four.
I'll just say with that, I was able to increase our pledge this year because I figured out how to not have to pay taxes on the amount of money that I was given to the church. So I was able to do it pre-tax, which meant that tax money came to the congregation and not to the church.
Excellent, don't pay that government. Yeah.
Number four, I'm Deb Ross, um, and a common theme that we've heard from other people, but I'm gonna repeat also, is the suggestion that we return back to, um, our congregation with a second round of information on budget, on, um, guidelines that the UUA and others have come up with, and that we also examine, uh, what our Zoom participants are, how they're, how they're participating, and whether there's a, uh, disconnect between the cost of serving them and pledge amounts. Um, and then, um, in terms of reducing costs or increasing revenues, pass on credit card fees, change pass plate percentage, and, um, and then rentals, as other people have, have noted.
Great, thank you, number four. And last but not least, the beautiful handwriting of Joe Joy.
Uh, so invest in a second service, so we have a bigger pond, perhaps, but don't equate, uh, members with money. Borrow some money. Uh, besides, uh, bake, uh, do bake sales, craft sales, car washes, all kinds of small, small, but, um, incremental ways to increase money. Um, increase the, uh, books, beans and brownies to OUU C, rather than out, outside. Um, examine if staff, uh, need, if we can consolidate staff, or even, um, get volunteers to do some of the staff work. Um, that would, uh, and also look at, you know, maybe decreasing hours for the, some of the staff, so we wouldn't have to pay, uh, benefits and insurance. Uh, expand, uh, outside, look for money outside OUU C. Look at, um, you know, other, uh, other, uh, GoFundMe, or some, some other ways to get, uh, community engagement into OUU C. Uh, rental in, income has been mentioned, but we also talking about, um, even for the grounds, uh, making it available for, say, forest bathing and retreat sort of things. Um, children's camps, uh, and childcare, that was, that was mentioned too, going back to our roots over in Tumwater. Um, but also, um, with that was also increasing our children's programming, so that more families can participate. Um, increase volunteerism, and, uh, and look to other congregations and see how, what, how they are dealing with that, because we're not alone in the problems that we have.
That's, that's true, amen to that. Well, this is great, I, really, great stuff. Thank you all for sharing, um, your ideas. You can see that we've had some general consensus, and, um, there's some that can, you know, we can look at immediately, and then long-term. Um, and I think that, that building a, a strategy over time is one thing, and I think that we need to think about, you know, if we save here, does that cut something off there? And what, you know, creates an opportunity, or, or the opportunity that we thought we might get might not have that unintended consequence. So, uh, I think that's really gonna weigh heavy with the, with the board, and, um, as we go through our budget discussions, again, we will all give, gather you back on the second of June, when, um, we've had a chance to look at the final numbers, and, um, and then if you, uh, have the opportunity to pledge more, please do. And, uh, I also wanna, then we'll vote on this, uh, this year's budget, the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, that will be voted on on June ninth. So that's our big congregational meeting, and I hope that you all be here for that. The date? The what? You can write a check. You could let, let, let the... You'd have to con, yes, you would have to contact the, the, uh, our budget, our business manager. Yep. Because it, it does cut you off right there. Yes, and Wendy, last question? I didn't hear all of it. Whoa, so the question was?
We will present a budget to the congregation, um, based on what we have and, and, um, how much we can get from other sources. So, you're, the minister presents us with the final budget, and we, as a board, tell her, um, what our biggest priorities are, and then she works with those priorities to, to get something that's balanced, that we can look at and vote on. So we do that high-level stuff for you. You're going to just approve the budget that funds the level of expenses that we can afford. Mary.
So I wanna add my thanks to all of you online and on-site for your, your thoughtfulness and engagement with this issue. In answer to your question, Wendy, so what I've been doing, so this is my sixth budget with you, with y'all. We know how to cut. We've been doing that every single budget I've done with you. That's not the issue. So what I give the board is this is what balance look like. This is what it costs to add these things that you've said are a priority, and the, but, the board will decide how much reserves to use. You know, that's the board's decision, that's what comes to the congregation. So just a couple things in addition to that. One is, um, a lot of you have talked about volunteerism, and have mentioned things that require volunteers. If you wanna volunteer, we would love to hear from you. I'm serious, we ask for volunteers a lot, and, um, I will tell you that the area where we are suffering from lack of volunteers the most right now is our welcome. It's our welcome. We don't have enough folks to follow up with the newcomers who fill out an online card to make a call. We don't have enough ushers and greeters. We don't have enough folks to be buddies to new people. We don't have enough people to help us with the new member class. If y'all are serious about increasing our engagement and our membership, we need to hear from you. Thank you. So, and then the last thing I just wanna say to you is, um, so this congregation's been in a plateau for ten years. It's been a plateau of the number of members, right around three hundred. It's been at a plateau in terms of stewardship, right, for ten years. That's a normal thing. The, the, the wild increase that you all experienced during Arthur's time, that's a normal thing too. It just doesn't go on forever, and eventually it will plateau, and it did. And so, this, you know, people... And so, this, you know, people who study church cycles, this plateaus are a normal thing. One of two things happens after a church plateaus. Either a church continues to do what it's always done, and it will decline over time. Because membership doesn't grow, expenses grow, the cut, you know, continues to cut, and it will decline over time. It might take a while, but it will decline. Or, the church makes a conscious decision to do something different in terms of its programming and welcoming and facility, and it will grow again. This congregation is at the point of making that decision, and no decision means there will be decline, when we could do that. I would suggest that we make a conscious decision, and either decision is okay. And what I've said to the board and will say to you is, I feel like my ministry with you is to help you decide which route you want to take, because that will inform who your next minister is. I'm serious. It's a very different skill set for a minister who will be developmental and help you grow, or a minister that will help you do whatever it is you're gonna plateau or decline over time. Very different skill sets. You decide.
Okay, we kept you longer than, um, we promised, but I really thought this was really great, and it's so nice to look at you all face to face and see your names, and then engage with each other. We don't get that, uh, opportunity like this very often, and it's my hope that we do that more and more because it was my personal goal that we would, uh, increase our relationship building. And, um, so I really appreciate all the relationships that are, we're building today and into the future. So, with that, have a good week, y'all, okay?
Carmel, would you like to, um, put out the chalice?
No, that's good.
Okay.
The thing makes me.